It's now six thirty. I'd like to call the City of Manassas. Council meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Orchowski.
Here.
Councilperson Thomas.
Here.
Councilman Nestor. Councilperson Cosner.
Here.
Mayor motion.
Present.
Mayor, we have four present, one absent. We note a quorum.
I would also like to get John Nestor on the phone with us if we could.
Much by that?
Yeah, let me hit the number. Hello, would you like to join us on our council meeting?
Just say no, John.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, perfect.
Okay, you're on speaker box in the council meeting.
All right, we'll go and take it.
Yeah, we'd like to add you to the roll. Thank you, yes. This time I'd like to ask Pastor Jim Nicholson to lead us in a prayer. I do have a mic here you can use.
Oh, okay. Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, Father, we're grateful, as always, that we could come and bring law and order into this community. We pray a blessing over this council and over the residents and attendants tonight, that the power of love would come into your hearts and wisdom would prevail, and that peace and order would fill our hearts, and that the work of this council would be done tonight decently and in order. I bless you, and I pray a blessing on Mayor Ron, that your heart would be truly, truly turned to the needs of this community, and that everyone would know it and everyone would respond, and there would be agreement and cooperation, that Manassas would rise up and the renewal that you are endeavoring to bring would manifest in this season of time. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are two sets of meeting minutes for council to approve tonight. When ready, please make such a motion and...
We do have the January second.
Yeah, we have both the January second, oh, three.
Three.
I'm sorry, December fourteenth, December twenty-eighth, and January the second meeting minutes to approve this evening.
We'd like to make a motion for the approval minutes of our previous sessions of December fourteenth, 2023, December twenty-eighth, 2023, and that of January second, 2024, the reorganization meeting.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor. Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on agenda items only. Does anybody have any correspondence that they'd like to bring forth? Letters to the city. At this time, I'd like to ask our solicitor for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. On tonight's agenda, you will see an approval that the city is going to provide to Hilltop Volunteer Fire Department. As part of the process, they're borrowing money to buy, to purchase a pump, a new pumper truck. The type of borrowing that they're doing requires municipal approval. It's according to the Internal Revenue Code. This doesn't bind the city to any repayment of the loan. It's just required that the home municipality does provide that approval. I participated on a conference call with the city administrator regarding an ongoing issue with the vehicle insurance for the fire departments. The insurance company was able to resolve that. That was with a rider to the city's insurance policies, correct, Mr. Korpash?
That's correct.
Okay. Also, we're looking for more demo hearings to be scheduled. I was thinking before February twenty-second is part of the county ARBA project. Is that okay with council?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask our city treasurer if he has anything he'd like to report.
So do you, Mayor. Mayor, council, and citizens of Manassas, this is my end of year report for Janu- for December 2023. Garbage fees revenue. Garbage fees current, December, we collected $4,936. Year-to-date, $361,470. Budget amount, $325,587. Garbage fees delinquent. December, we collected $1,651.49. Total year-to-date, $61,421.17. Budget amount, $80,780. Amount collected by Portnoy. December, we received $11.49. Year-to-date, $21,885.58. This figure was included in the above account of $61,400. Penalties and interest from Fort- Fortnoy in December, $0.69. Year-to-date, $3,027. Budget amount, $2,145. Garbage fees collected for the next year, 2024. December, we received $59,654. Year-to-date, $158,524. Budget amount was $1,385. Total December collections, $66,242.18. Year-to-date, $584,442.17. Budget amount, $409,897. City real estate taxes revenues, city real estate taxes current. December, we received $30,239.45. Year-to-date, $2,025,213.60. Budget amount, $2,013,724. City taxes per year collected by the city. Year, we collected nothing in December. Year-to-date, $8,673.30. Budget amount, $5,503. Total realis- city real estate taxes collected for 2023, $2,033,886.90. Delinquent city taxes collected by Westmoreland County, we received nothing this, for December. Year-to-date, we received $251,987.81. Budget amount was $167,423. Total year-to-date taxes collected, it's for city real estate, $2,285,874.71. Distribution is as follows. General fund, year-to-date, $1,414,975.14. Budget amount, $1,400,947.79. General debt service, year-to-date, $383,997.89. Budget amount, $380,191.90. Library, year-to-date, $41,735.86. Budget amount, $40,677.22. Parks, year-to-date, $193,178.1 cent. Budget amount, $191,907.90. Total year-to-date and budget amount, or total year-to-date was $233,886.90. Budget amount was $200, $2,013,724. Miscellaneous income. Real estate transfer tax, December, we received $3,086.64. Year-to-date, $119,743.80. Budget amount, $89,333. Earned income tax, December, we received $83,690.19. Year-to-date, $723,927.49. Budget amount, $513,898. Mercantile tax, December, $40.50. Year-to-date, $20,902.91. Budget amount, $22,579. Local service tax, December, we received $1,174.72. Year-to-date, $76,686.76. Budget amount, $53,357. Tax certifications. December, we received $1,790. Year-to-date, $22,890. Budget amount, $21,940. Municipal lien letters, December, we received $1,275. Year-to-date, $16,350. Budget amount, $14,775. On secure line usage account. Unsecured payments were received, nothing. Year-to-date, $11,341,341. Line usage fee, December, we received $69,78.21. Year-to-date, $891,449.40. For a total year-to-date income of $902,790.40. Ladies and gentlemen, if anybody would like a copy of the year-end report and also the explanation of all the miscellaneous accounts receivables, you can see me after the meeting. I have hobbies.
I have one question. What's the bottom line?
He waits, hold your questions. Hold your questions to the end. Hold your questions to the end.
Well, I hope he stays with you.
He always stays. What is that earning again?
Has it sometimes been borrowed?
Let's continue.
A motion to accept my report.
We need a motion?
Yep.
I'd like to motion to accept the city, the report of the city treasurer of the city of Manassas.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor. Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask the city controller, she has a report for?
Yes, Mayor. The general fund, salary referral savings bank checking account. The bank reconciliation as of December 31st, 2023. The beginning bank balance as of November 30th, 2023 was $533,168.76. Deposits made were $239,405.57. Expenses, $404,899.12. The ending balance as of December 31st, 2023 was $367,675.21. The outstanding checks amounted to $59,937.12. Outstanding deposits, $3,472.41. The reconciliation to the bank statement, $311,210.50. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I'd ask the audience, if they got conversations, either take it outside or be silent while we're having our meeting. Thank you. I really not going to have a lot of updates on what we had going on this last couple of weeks. First off, I was sick with the flu for a good portion of the time. We did suffer a power failure here at the city hall, and it lasted the better part of a day. The biggest problem was it took out the internet, and we had no internet for the vast majority of the day. That took out the phones and different things like that. We were able to actually have a very good meeting with the LISC group, L-I-S-C group of the HUD's DCTA, the Distressed Communities Technical Assistance Group. They met with Westmoreland Community Action, and I'm pleased, quite pleased to announce that Westmoreland Community Action did receive funding to build the five homes on Motherall. So that project is going to be going forward. There'll be a press release that comes out on that very soon. Everything looks very positive with it. I'm very, very pleased to see that happen. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to Lois as she'd read some of these motions here, and we'll get...
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to make a motion to set policies within the city of Manassas relative to expenditures for petty cash and credit card purchases within city government, and to correct policies to create and provide direction and regulation for transactions of these types.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchowski.
Hold on one second. You got a question?
So what policies are we setting?
Well, the policies have been to be determined and to be set, established. All this is saying is we will set some policies.
So it's to be determined?
Yeah, the policies are.
And you'll vote on the policy once it's completed?
Right.
Okay. Sorry about that, Mike.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Uh.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of ammunition and related supplies for the training and utilization of police force within the city of Manassas in their day-to-day operations. The Manassas Police will request an appropriation of $3,500 from the city of Manassas and will utilize an additional amount of $4,748.81 from the PCCD grant fund allocation for a total of $8,248.81 for supplies for the 2024 calendar year.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Any questions?
I just want everybody to know, and I think Chief, tell me if I'm wrong. It's not that our police department spends a heck of a lot of ammunition shooting things. It's a lot of this is for training too, Mike, correct?
That's right. We are pretty much depleted on certain calibers. So this is just to get us back to where we should be.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor. Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to accept the transfer of property located at 554 Donner Avenue in the city of Manassas, also known as 560 Donner, to the city of Manassas for no cost outside of the payment of an outstanding electrical bill at the location not to exceed $200.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I do have a question, Mayor. It is, I know... What are we supposed to, what are we going to do with the building?
It's to be determined. It can be sold, it can be rented, it can be demolished.
Demol- demol-
The bottom line is that it is a building across the street that gives the city the control over the vast majority of the block, which has huge developmental opportunities.
And I understand that. What a couple of my concerns, though, are is, one, we don't have the rest of the block. Oh, I'm sorry. We don't have the rest of the block. And I don't know, is that to be determined or is that being worked out? Or have you been, has the city been approached by the owners of the last, is it two or three buildings?
There's only one building left besides this one.
Over there?
Mm-hmm.
Well, isn't there the corner big building?
The big corner building and the...
And the, and the one that used to be a pet trimming?
It's gone. It's gone. You know, only two buildings left over there, the, the bank building that we just acquired.
And the big corner building.
There's a big corner building.
An alleyway right out here.
Yeah.
All the way to the corner on Fifth Street.
Okay.
And that's Bylons who insists that he will give it to the city at some point soon.
Do you think that's the entire building?
Yes.
From the corner of?
Yes.
Yes, it would be one building. It's all attached, isn't it?
No, no, they're separate buildings. The, the other building is on the demo list, Johnson's Restaurant.
My, my only concern is, that's not a typical building. And to take, I don't want the city to demolish it and spend the money because it's not a simple knock it down for fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty grand. It's got a stainless steel vault in there that's going to take specialized, required individuals to even bid on it, to even come in there and even... Now, I'm not saying if they bid something and they're going to take it out, of course, they're going to reap the benefit of the stainless steel. But still, how many tons is that thing?
It's going to be over $200,000.
That's my only concern, is it becomes, we get the rest and we have an albatross sitting there. What is the procedure or what would happen if we just have the county take care of it as they've been taking care of everything else? I just want to ask the questions.
Well, we can, in fact, get the county to demo that building should we decide that that's what we want to do.
Okay.
Was Tommy talking about the bank or the grid?
No, I'm talking about the bank.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Is the bank part of that deal?
I'm, I'm sorry, Ted, I didn't...
Is the bank part of that deal? I thought it was just the, from the big building on the corner to the alley.
No, no, the big building has nothing to do with this, what we're talking about now. We're only talking about the bank building across the street. It's a solid building that can be used, and that's what I'm saying.
But why would you tear it down? Why would it be on, you said...
Well, there's three things that we can do with it. We can, we can sell it, we can rent it out, or we can tear it down. If we had a development coming in that wanted that land and wanted it more than the building was worth. Well, but we're, we're working with people that might do that. Bring all these questions to later.
Well, I...
Have you advertised it yourself?
Well, we don't own it yet until... Right now, it just happened, from what I understand, right?
Right.
It just, I mean, it just happened.
Right, wait, what's the knockdown?
But what, no, wait a minute, I'm not, I'm not against the knocking it down. My question is, can the city have the resources, if it takes it over, to be able to not take it down? That's one. Two, the second question I would have is, that gentleman from California that owned it, or owns it or did own it, is giving it to us.
Right.
He had it for sale for, from a hundred-some thousand down to forty thousand.
I offered him forty, in fact.
But he couldn't still sell it for forty. So my concern is what makes us think that we could sell it for that, if he couldn't sell it, and he had a realtor, he was paying a realtor to do it? I just want to ask all these questions so they don't come out later.
And all those questions are very valid. I don't know that I have answers for all those questions. The, the property has been turned over to the city, which has not been recorded, the deed, recorded deeds.
Okay.
But my, my thing is, Ernie, the intent is not to tear that building down. I think the intent is actually to either rent it out or sell it or possibly lease it and have someone use it. Because that building is, like you said, it's in good condition. So I don't think that's the intent to demo it.
It's an excellent opportunity for, as an example, to become a place where the Nehemiah of the, the Westmoreland Ca- Community Action...
Ernie.
Hey, Ernie, shut up.
Ernie.
Ernie?
Ernie, please. Please, Ernie.
Ernie?
The other question I have on it is, and I know in the big scheme of things, the $200 is like a blip on a radar.
Mm-hmm.
My concern is setting a precedent, though.
You consider you just buy it for $200, yeah?
But we're not. We're paying an electric bill. And the guy's, the thing that bothered me about it a little bit was, he's from California, he's from Los Angeles, and his office is Wilshire Boulevard.
Yeah.
Now, I've never been to California, but I do know what Wilshire Boulevard is.
Yes.
The property, there's probably millions of dollars just for a small office, so why can't he afford a $200 bill?
That was just part of the deal.
Ernie, I'm, I'm just asking questions because I don't... I, I'm just concerned about that if someone else comes down the road, wants to give us a property for something and says, oh, we got a gas bill for something, you pay my gas bill and we'll take it over too. The city will do it. I, I'm just worried about a precedent. I understand in the scope of things, on the bigger picture, yes, it makes sense, but that's a slippery slope, and I don't, I'm not gonna... I'm just sorry about going down that.
Anytime you do property, it's a process of negotiation. I don't think there's any precedent to be set. Is there any other questions from council?
I don't. I think I said enough, unfortunately.
I'd like to call the roll then.
Well, I just got one thing.
Okay.
Electric bill. Just electric.
One question, where's going to be our fillback if the air is filling here and you put mayor to be able to link it, or to link it from the back there, so we're not stuck with it?
We can, we can always do that. There's plenty of places we can do that. Westmoreland Land Bank is an example. Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor. Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski.
No.
Mayor motion.
Yes. We're accepting that building across the street. To accept that property across the street. Simple as that.
I'm asking a simple question, so I'm not trying to get smart. You know, it's the first of the year, and I don't want to get a morass.
You can, you can wait till the end to ask questions. We're going to have some decorum here.
What is that you voted on?
To accept that building across the street. That simple.
Well, we also accepted, paid the $200 bill.
And pay a $200 bill.
That's the point. That's true.
Okay.
Did you want me to read that motion we made again? Did you want me to read it again for you? Since you, you know, maybe you said you couldn't hear us. Is it okay if I just read what we did? Here's what it was, Pino. It was a motion to accept the transfer of property located at 554 Donner Avenue in the city of Manassas, also known as 560 Donner, to the city of Manassas for no cost outside of the payment of an outstanding electrical bill at the location not to exceed $200.
And just so everybody's clear, and I think I'm right on this, Mayor, and I, please, I might need your help. The actual electric bill was $166 or $188?
$122.
Okay, I was off, but it, that's what the bill is, so.
All it is, is running some dehumidifiers in the basement. Okay, let's move on.
It's past due.
A motion of the city of Manassas to recognize, acknowledge the financing of one new Fouts four-dash-five-five-zero crew cab GPM rescue pumper by the Manassas Volunteer Fire Department Hose House Number Two. Contention on the completion of a public hearing to be held by the Number Two Fire Company on Friday, January 12th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. at the Manassas Volunteer Fire Company Hose House Number Two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Nestor. Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
A motion to approve payment requisition number fourteen and certificate in amount of $75,019.60 for the Phase Three A and Phase Three B work performed during the month of December, 2023. The appropriate invoices for approval by council are attached to this agenda as Exhibit One.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor. Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve 2024 hourly rate schedule for sewer rehabilitation project Phase Three amended number four amendment to owner-engineer agreement, Exhibit K, to increase standard hourly rates on a project by 3% for this agreement effective January 1st, 2024. The pertinent pages from this agreement and previous amendments are attached to this agenda as Exhibit Two.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor. Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve the hiring of an animal control officer within the city of Manassas for the calendar year 2024. Resume and contract information are attached to this agenda as Exhibit Three.
Is there a second?
No.
I think we really need to clarify...
Yeah.
I think we need to, I think we need to clarify exactly who we're going to use in this process. So, there's two, two companies left. The... The, um.
It's off two.
And I think we're down to two. The, uh, Kim no longer was willing to do it. She got another contract, doesn't have the time to do Manessin work.
So, I said there's three.
Okay.
The, uh, two companies, just to be clear, one is Hoffmann's and the other is. Who rescued who, Humane Society, also known as WR, W H S. There's only some minor changes that would have to be made in the second one to recognize Manessin as a city and not as a borough, and the fact that we do not have a council president. We have a mayor who does both.
Well, now, the, the police need it now, but that was a problem. Oh, there it is. Four seventy-five.
Yeah, and the other one's four sixty.
Somebody explain to me what section six means.
Fifty dollars?
Yeah.
They both have them, I see. It's just a ten dollar two.
That, that's, that's part of a state law requirement. If a dog's detained, there's a fifty dollar fee that goes, I believe, directly to the state.
I would like to point out that both of these really follow the same state laws, and these are basically state mandated, uh, issues. It might be construed that the demeanor of Hoffmann's is somewhat brash. The way that they treat us as the customer is not always the most pleasurable. But I think that both of these companies agree to the same requirements as mandated by the state. We do have experience with Hoffmann, we have no experience with the other one.
So, is it a?
I'm looking for somebody to say, we're gonna use this or that one.
I'm not looking for either of them, because there's a, there's a, section one, Article C says, "Hold stray or otherwise appearing to be unlicensed dogs and in good health for a period of forty-eight hours, after which time said dog to be placed or humanely destroyed."
That is a state requirement.
No, 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 that's a state, it's not a requirement. It's, it's just something that I understand, is when I talk to Hoff, Kaufman about it, it's something they adhere to if they need to do it.
And that's the way both of them actually stated. If you talk to them, they both are very, but in the contract, they both state that they will do that.
Don't get their contract. If, if there are humane society, they have bought dogs and cats and animals, they put them out, and they don't put them down. You know, they should put down people, they should put some people down, not dogs and cats. So, there is a better way of doing this.
I, I'm.
Yeah, they both say after forty-eight hours.
The whole idea, at least my thought, was the whole idea to go seek and look out for other bids for this was because Kaufman was not a no-kill shelter. It was a, if you don't pick your dog up or they don't get a hold of you, that's what's gonna happen.
Yep.
And there's a ton of stuff online, on Facebook, that's stated from people that lost their beloved animals because after, one, Kaufman was closed on the weekends, they were closed after five o'clock, they didn't answer their phone, and if they picked your animal up on a Friday, Monday morning, when you went to find out about what was going on, it was dog already passed.
Is there any way we can ask for a more number of days? Maybe like five days or?
The, the, the problem is, is we have a, a dog problem in Manessin that's affecting us right now. There is a dog that needs to be picked up, and we've got to come up a way to do this.
So, you could wait an extra day?
I, I.
We have.
I understand the chief's going nuts on this, on this problem, but I personally can't be part of someplace that will put down an animal if they don't get a hold of the owner. I, I'm sorry. I don't care what happens in the city. I don't do that.
The, the, they, they have actually contacted, they know who the owner is. That is not the problem. There are, let, let, let me, let me say a little story here. This hurts because it's very near and dear to me. My, uh, son-in-law adopted a, a baby pit bull when, before my, uh, son was born, and that got to be a very good house pet, believe it or not. It was loved by everybody, it took extremely good care of my grandson, and my grandson was growing up with him. But as the grandson got older, the dog became extremely attached to the grandson. That dog would protect that grandson beyond any belief you can possibly imagine. You would not walk over and touch the grandson with that dog in the room because the dog was gonna take your hand off. It did not allow anybody to interact with my grandson. It turned out that my, my, uh, son-in-law had some people over at their house, he had the dog hold it as tight as he could. It's a big, heavy dog. Pit bulls are strong dogs. He had it held as tight as he could, and he asked the kids to go in the house. As the kid, once the kids were going in the house, the dog just turned his head and grabbed one of them and bit it on the arm. Many stitches. It was a serious problem. The dog had to be put down. There are dogs that are pets, and they're safe pets.
Why don't you just say no to it? You're trying to beat us. I have dogs.
And, I'm sorry.
The dog has better life than you do.
Well, perhaps, but there are some dogs that have, are just different.
Come up with this some dog shit, and my story is.
Okay, come on.
Try to listen.
You can talk about it later on.
Your story is nothing but a bunch of crap.
There's also, there's, there's also on, on that WR, W H S, if you look on the, the last page.
Mm-hmm.
And it's section seven B. It says, "A board fee for each day the animal remains in the custody of WR, W H S. The fee must be, okay, it's paid by the owner and said animal prior to the release of the Again, that, my question to that would be, that I would want them here to say, look, it's Friday at four o'clock. My dog got loose. Police picked it up, they called them, they picked it up. Are they paying for the whole weekend? Or until, is this until the owner finds out and has to contact them? I mean, we have a lot, a lot, a lot of dog owner lover pets in this city. We don't need to alienate people like this.
I agree.
I don't know what the suggestion is, and I know the police are in a bind, Chief, I understand, but I don't, the way I look at this right now, these two are not our option.
That's right. Exactly. I agree with you.
I mean, that's just my opinion, I'm sorry.
Just for others.
I got three dogs that come down my street all the time. They're not on a leash, they don't have.
That doesn't mean they're gonna be picked up.
The parents have to, you have to go, parent, anytime a little kid, eight or nine years old, has a dog that's over sixty pounds and not on their leash and walking them through the neighborhood, I, yeah, so I think you go after the parents on that.
Well, I do too, but that's not what the problem is right now. Chief, do you have anything you'd like to say about this?
We have no dog officers. I have, we get calls every day of dogs chasing people. Uh, excuse me, we currently have abandoned dogs in abandoned house right now that I was waiting for this motion here. I have a search warrant ready to go get the dogs out and out. But, right now, I, I don't know what to do, because we're very limited on what we can actually do. Yes, we have a dog hole, we can grab a dog, but what then, we don't have any facility to score a dog, especially a dangerous dog, to do. Uh, I'm not concerned with like the labs or the, or anything like that, it's the dangerous dogs out there that are going to be a, an issue, not only, or, mostly to the community. And, uh, yeah, it's a serious problem. We've had, uh, six or seven complaints already here alone of dog complaints. That includes dogs chasing kids down the road. So.
I thought they just chased cars.
Uh, we were lucky enough that, and the one that I emailed the other day, my officers were able to, uh, get the dog back up to the property, uh, were able to reach out to the owner. We were very fortunate for that. Uh, there are some, some that we're not that lucky on. So, uh, right now, we missed the bullet with, but it's gonna be a, if not anything, a liability. It's not only for my department, for the city itself. So, that's why we, we didn't, we didn't control it here. Uh, I know that there are some parts, you know, things with Hoffmann's, but Hoffmann's been here, you know, for years, ever since, uh, Fred Moran retired. So, uh, yeah, that's where I, I just, we need somebody.
I'm gonna ask this listener a question. Would it be possible to, to, do you think it would be reasonable or possible that we could contact either one of these two and ask them for an evaluation period of, say, thirty days?
Right. Yeah, you can, you can certainly ask.
Who does? Get somebody else, why are we stuck with the same people?
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute.
I wanna add on to this, because I noticed a question that, uh, everyone has. There's not that many dog officers out there.
Right.
They're, they're very far between. Uh, there's only maybe a handful probably in, just in this, this area alone.
Who does, who does Chalaroy, Denor, and everybody have?
Chalaroy used Kim, uh, Chalaroy used Kim Secree. Ross Schreiber just got Kim Secree, that's the, uh, other one who, uh, withdrew her interest in Manessin. Uh, Denor has their own guy, uh, he's not interested coming to Manessin. Uh, I think, I think Belverde, North Belverde still uses Hoffmann's.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's pretty much, it's usually, it's, in this area, it's Kim Secree or Hoffmann's.
Going at evaluation, if you get a thirty day, is it possible to ask them to at least make it five days before they euthanize a dog?
We can make any request we want.
Right, that's what I mean, can we at least make it five days? Because two days, like you said, if it's a weekend, at least you got three days, and you still got two more days to contact.
Talk to a veterinarian, and he'll give you good suggestions. You, you talk to somebody else.
You guys don't talk to nobody.
You talk to a veterinarian, they'll be able to give you good, place to get.
We've talked to a lot of people.
It's a shame we didn't get the one lady.
It is, but that just, we, we missed it. I would like to make, to modify this, that we do make a request of both of them to see if either one of them would agree to do a thirty-day period, guaranteeing us at least five days before any euthanization took place, and give us an opportunity to see how well they work out under that condition.
But wouldn't they have to shelter that dog?
For thirty, five days.
The owner's responsible, right, for those, the owner's responsible for the fee?
Not the suit.
No.
Right.
I think the owner gave you a thirty-day period. It was not about five days.
I would, I would like to see that state something along the line that if they're not, they haven't contacted the owner within five days, that they're contacting the Western Pennsylvania Humane Society or the Westmoreland County Humane Society. I would rather see them take the extra effort and do that than just, than, than just five days and they're done.
No, I think it says that they will try to place it or humanely. So, the first thing is to place it first.
Well, it said try.
Well.
No, just it will be placed or.
Again, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be in front of the individuals or the family that said, my, my animal was put down and I went to go get it, and they said they were gonna place it or whatever, and it didn't happen. I don't want that conversation.
That information that Lois has read, we don't have that. So, why don't we have that?
Linda, do you want mine? It's in a package for us.
Thank you.
You can share it with Ernie, hopefully.
So, we've then had a motion, we seconded it. Do we wanna, let's go ahead and have the vote.
You don't change it.
No, we need to.
You have to alter that, you gotta alter that motion.
Second for the amendment.
Okay, the mo, the amendment would be, motion to contact both companies and see if either one, whichever was first, would agree to the terms that they hold the dog a minimum of five days, that they agree to contact the kennel or Humane Society before it's you're not euthanized.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Okay. Call the roll then.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Uh.
Councilperson Cogner?
Yes.
Mayor Moser?
Yes.
Motion to pay an invoice request from Urban Design Ventures for the preparation and submission of that fiscal year twenty twenty-three CDB, CDBG application to Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development in amount of five thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Any questions?
Is this just the annual fee? Or is this an eighteen percent of something?
No, this is, this, yeah. That's just a retainer.
Right.
Does that commit us to anything?
No.
Hey, boy.
That was for him submitting the twenty twenty-three application.
Right, yeah. That's the application.
Okay.
Call the roll.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Yes.
Mayor Moser?
Yes. At this time, turn it over to Tony.
Gee, I feel like I've said enough already.
Now's your chance.
A motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of twenty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cogner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Uh.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the recreational account in the amount of one thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-three cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Uh.
Councilperson Cogner? Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Parks Fund in the amount of $1,400.69. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call or roll?
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor? Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from line usage account in the amount of $14,622.52. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call or roll?
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor? Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following liquid fuel invoices from the liquid fuel account in the amount of $2,209.47. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call or roll?
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor? Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve the transfer of $86,983.37 from the general fund to the payroll account to cover payroll expenses.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call or roll?
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester? Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to purchase a 2023 police Ford Interceptor from C Harper in the amount of $55,835. And to have the vehicle detailed and graphics applied by Evans Graphics in amount of $1,045 for a total allocation from the ARP Fund, American Rescue Plan, in the amount of $56,880.
Is there a second? Any questions?
I would just like to tell everybody that, uh, C Harper has a vehicle in stock. The chief has been talking to them, so this isn't going to be like last time we purchased something, it took eight, ten, twelve months to come in. It will be fairly quick. So, without, with them getting it detailed, with everything that the chief, the police department's requested, we should probably see it within less than a month?
Maybe, okay, so, but I mean, it depends how busy they are at the, uh, uh, the shop where they do all the, uh, upholding. That's where most of the, most of the time will be.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Call or roll?
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester? Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve the allocation of $3,792.93 for the license renewal of QuickBooks Financial Operating System for the 2024 fiscal year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call or roll?
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester? Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to allocate $176.47 from the general fund to the liquid fuels account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
And so, everybody knows what that is. If you have a question, is, last month, I allocated two bills that totaled $176 and we paid them of, uh, liquid fuels. And later was found out that they were, the invoices were for grease?
Code officer.
And the code, code officer car getting fixed. So, we're just transferring the money back to liquid fuels where it properly should have, should, it should have came out of the general fund, not liquid fuels account. I did.
Call or roll, please?
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester? Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Mayor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, mayor motion?
Excuse me, on that motion, should it be reversed? Aren't we reinforcing the general fund?
No.
No, I charged it to the liquid fuels.
This is something was charged to liquid fuels that should not have been charged to liquid fuels.
Rosalie, remember those two invoices that you mentioned?
Yes.
It was, they were, it was paid out of liquid fuels, but it should have got paid out of the general.
That's correct.
The third one was grease that, I don't know three things, but the garage doors.
On, on Tony's behalf, um, the invoices really didn't indicate exactly what this stuff was. It was very difficult to figure out.
I guessed. On that, I guessed.
You guessed.
I'll, I'll just admit it, I guessed. Okay, uh, the last thing, mayor, the balances in the accounts. Refuge has $147,987.46. ARP Fund has $209,347.85. Payroll has $12,512.66. Healthcare has $3,759.42. Debt service has $829,178.99. Fire escrow has $21,230.48. Grant, grant fund has $58,563.60. Line usage has $789,137.43. Liquid fuels has $10,586.69. Parks has $44,920.75. Rec board has $5,375.47. And I need to explain these last two because I'm gonna get a question if I don't. The general fund has $176,787.8, but we also have another line, uh, subaccount, and that is the tan note for $500,000.
But without the tan note?
Without the tan note, we still have $176,787.8. So, I just wanna make the distinction. I know it's, this, not everybody agrees with me on this, but I'm trying to want to separate tan and what the general, it, it, the general fund is the tan. Let's, let's be clear about that. But like I did, and I got the council to do it last year of the refuge, I prefer to have a subaccount and just separate it. Because my thoughts going to be is, as the general account goes down and it gets below, say, $75,000, I will be making motions to council to take $100,000 from that and move it over to the general. Because I just don't want the whole thing, so I wanna be able to track how much we need. And hopefully, we don't need half of it. And if we don't need half of it, and by March, the first of April, taxes are coming in, we're gonna pay it all off and get it out of there. So, that's the thought. I just want everybody to know that, so there's no questions.
Very good.
I'm done, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Lois, your, your report, if you have one.
Mayor, if I can, I'd like to defer the reading of the report for the month ending December 31st until our next meeting on Thursday, January 25th.
Okay. John, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Honorable mayor, members of council, we're all just, uh, I will stay till the next meeting for my report. And I would like to apologize if I can't be there physically, but I'm here with the, thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate you taking this effort to be present over the phone.
Yeah, I wish to prove on anyone.
Thank you. Uh, our new councilperson, Karen, do you have anything you'd like to report?
I don't have anything that I'd like to report, but I would like you all to know that I am here two days a week, Tuesday and Thursday. I have an office upstairs. So, if you have any questions at all, or you think there's something out there that you've noticed about the parks that I need to go and physically look at, please call or email me. I spent the majority of the afternoon on Saturday being taken around by a longtime resident of Vanessa. And we tra, we traveled through all the parks, we walked the steps to try to give me an idea of what's out there now. I took photographs, but I ca, I, I can't be everywhere all the time. So, if you see anything, please let me know before it becomes a big issue. And you can call anytime and come, come see me. I'm gonna be upstairs. Since I'm no longer at the library, I'm probably gonna get lonesome up here. So, it would be nice to see you and let me know what your concerns are, if you have any, um, solutions, any issues. I'm hoping we're gonna have an amazingly civil and respectful year. That is my hope. So, thank you, and, uh, now you know, that's my little piece, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on any item that council can make, have effect on.
We got four issues here. Now, that's nice that you gave Karen an office. Now, if we believe in equality, did you offer the other council members an office? You didn't do that, did you?
Ernie, Lois, me, John, work. We would never be here anyways.
But, did they discuss this to you?
This is.
No, so, the thing is, you guys are scurrying everything here.
I don't think it needs to be discussed.
Well, it does. Because if you're gonna give one councilman or woman, uh, some sort of a, a, upper case of office or representation, the other people gotta have it too. Or at least discuss it.
Don't, don't do that. Karen is opening up her position for the residents of Vanessa.
Well, sure, the other ones too. The other one should do it too.
They just told you they work.
Well, then why are we electing people who cannot come into the kitchen? That's what I wanna know.
Ernie, I'm more than, I'm more than assured and confident that if you had come to Karen and had a problem.
Now, I have no problem with Karen.
And, no.
It has nothing to do with Karen.
Let me finish, let me finish. If you came and you had a problem and you spoke to Karen, and it was about me, I'm sure she'd get back to me and let me know, even if the mayor wasn't there. So, she is gonna be a huge asset to be upstairs? God love her that wants to come in down here two days a week.
Okay, we're not talking about Karen. Anyway, second issue. You promised me for three months, and even the last meeting, that you're gonna vote on taking the property liability of the library and put it on your, uh, public buildings that you have. Why haven't you done this yet?
Next meeting, we talked about it.
Next me, well, okay, you said next meeting nine times.
No, we didn't, Ernie.
Yes, nine ti, look at the tape, nine times. That's right, more than, uh, nine times.
It was, it was, it was discussed today with.
Okay, their deadline passed, January 4th. So, what is that gonna do? Bring down the credit rating?
No.
Oh, no, it won't, why? If you miss a payment, guess why? It does. They're not paying it because they don't got the money.
I thought we discussed this in the office the other day.
You said you're gonna bring it up this meeting, that's what you told me.
You were pretty cooperative about it, though, and said.
I, I was expecting you, I, I thought you were gonna come through with it. It's not even on the agenda.
We came through with, with the case, we come through with this, yeah.
Now, the library also has six buckets here because, because of the rain, they got a new section of the roof going down.
We need the substantiation from that today. We haven't seen it yet. I have not seen it.
All right, it, it's go back to something else. You guys are supposed to produce your duties safe and exercise the basic, uh, premises of having a city government. Now, this newspaper, just like Ron, you guys smudge over what happened, why there was no electricity. And the reason is, the generators didn't work. Why didn't they work?
Let me, let me explain that, then. They didn't work because the battery was dead.
Yeah, you're supposed to check it, you're supposed to check it.
Exactly, and it had not been checked by Sept- September.
Yeah, whose responsibility was it to check it?
The police, it belongs to the building, they need to be responsible.
Who, yeah, who, who's the responsible? Name the person, I don't wanna talk about.
The police and/or the fire department.
Who?
The police and/or the fire department.
Oh, but Mr. John Nestor, he's a public, uh.
He's, he's works during, he's not available.
Okay, so we got these excuses. They can't have offices, they work, and then they can't fulfill their responsibility because they work. This is all baloney. And the city of Vanessa is responsible because they follow like a group think tank, vote for these people.
Ernie, settle down, settle down.
Okay, now, it, it's something else. I understood, going to all these meetings for the twelve years, that there was a maintenance agreement on that generator that Mr. John R. High did with Cummings. Five-year guarantee agreement from.
And all that covers is the engine itself.
Twenty twenty, from 2020 to December 31.
And all that does is take care of changing the oil at periodic intervals. That's the extent of what that does.
Is that all? So, if something broke, breaks down, then what? Did you go back to Cummings? No.
That's not the prob, where the problem is.
Well, do what to somebody else?
Yes.
So, nobody's honoring the past. This is what I like, we elect new people up here, and then nobody, let's say, connects to the past to see what is good and what isn't good. But you guys do your own thing, like all the other previous administrations, and there's no continuity, there's no continuity. We're starting from zero all the time. Now, one other thing. I appreciate that when you guys are giving out statements, figures and all that, like Mr. Saxon did, I wanna know, just like the taxpayers, where are we, December 31? He gave us all these transactions, so where are we? How much money did you come up that we're in a plus or are we in the red?
I just take care of the money coming in. I am not responsible for the distribution of funds.
I didn't say distribution. I didn't say, I said, how much money do you calculate?
I explained it to you if you wanna listen.
Yeah, go ahead.
Listen, fine. That is in charge of the accounts and finance. I give him the money for paying the bills. Now, what he can do with that is make sure all the bills are paid and hopefully, we have a surplus at the end of the year, which I believe we did after Mr. Chakowski's report.
How much, I'm asking how much?
He gave you that figure.
Were you sleeping when I said $176,000?
I wanna know what his bookkeeping is compared to your bookkeeping.
Wait, no, wait, wait, let's, let's get the thing straight. You even asked me the question when I separated the general from the tan.
I wanna hear from him, he's the treasurer. You're not the treasurer.
The treasurer only records money coming in, the treasury does not.
Well, again, since he's recording, how much do we have at the end of December?
I did report how much we have.
He reported that.
What I distributed to the, to the accounts and finance, that is the report. I have a copy here, year, year-to-date. It's for you to have at the end of this meeting.
Let me, let me make sure that everybody really understands the way that this works. We have a treasury department. Any money that comes in the city for any purpose, with taxes, donations, LST, whatever the case may be, it goes to the treasury department. The treasury department's responsible for saying, okay, of this money, so much goes to the general fund, so much goes to the debt service fund, so much goes to the parks, so much goes to, to the, uh, what's the other one?
Library.
Library. I'm sorry. That is extended that. Uh, so up here, our response for paying the bills, for making sure that the city infrastructure's taken care of. Then we have the controller. The controller is the one that makes sure that everybody did what they're supposed to do.
Well, I, I hope she comes down on some of these people here. Anyway, I got one last issue. That is, you guys are fumbling the ball about how to take care of animals. We still didn't address the chief of police, his concern. No, no, he, they got a mad dog loose. You didn't tell him what he's supposed to do.
We did.
What, what did you tell him? He has to wait thirty days?
No, till in the morning, till in the morning.
Yeah, does the dog have rabies too? You guys keep shuffling everything around, and nobody knows exactly who's responsible.
The, uh, the issue was, and we had a long discussion on that, we have two different companies that we, we have choices for.
There's more than two companies, but you guys will go out of your circle. It's all one big clique, and you guys keep serving the same contractors for the last forty years. The same contractor.
If you would ever listen, you might learn something, Ernie. We have contacted numerous people, there's two companies.
Name me four, name me four you contacted. You can't even name me four.
Kim Secret.
Numerous. Yeah, I, I don't wanna hear that. You guys talk on both sides of your mouth, and I'm getting sick and tired of it. Because we're gonna go in debt real big this year. And what are you gonna do? You're gonna jack up the taxes and fees on everybody.
Calm down.
Thank you.
Linda Lacy, 1624 Maple Avenue. I just have a question. You said community action is gonna come in, build five houses?
Yes.
Um, what part of Motherall?
The, the middle part of Motherall.
Okay, is that apartment building on the corner of Motherall and Fourth Street still there?
Yes.
Or is that gonna be demolished anytime before this?
I sure hope so.
Okay. The other question I have is, I would like to thank Karen for opening up her office to the residents of Manassas. I don't have anything pressing right now, but if I do, I certainly will come visit you. And another thing, this is personal. Mayor, your attitude tonight is very disturbing to me.
I'm sorry.
And I don't like it.
There's got to be some decorum that we maintain in this room.
It's just very disturbing.
Because we are Manassas residents, and we have a right to come down here twice a month and discuss what's going on in our town.
And we have the right to make sure that we follow a proper decorum, and that's all we're saying. When I'm ignored, I will get that way.
Name is Pino Cienflon, 45 Montrever, 15062. Want to ask you a question. On the Civic Center, it was allocated somewhere between $48,000 to fix the floor, the kitchen, and they were gonna carpet one of the offices?
That wasn't 48,000, it was 20...
It was originally.
It was $44,775. Carpet was not even mentioned in that September report. It was the kitchen, the handout, the apron.
There was changes. We discussed that last meeting.
There was some change orders that took place.
It's okay, I'm used to it.
Continue, what would you like to ask me about that? Because we have made some great changes to that.
What is the change?
First off, go over there and look at the floor. It is phenomenal. It was done yesterday, no, the day before yesterday. They completely redid the basketball court, they redid the hallway. It looks spick and span, shines like you would not believe it, it looks better than it's looked in many years. It is in absolutely pristine condition. It cost the city zero. A company by the name of Apex provided insurance and a scope of work, came in and did what they said they were going to do. They've made that absolutely spick and span, and it looks great, and it cost the city zero. I've got nothing but good things to say about Apex. I'm saying that they came in and did it for zero. They charged us nothing. Tuesday. Go look at it. I would very much like to see what citizens think of it, because it is as nice as it's been ever.
Apex is a drilling company, you work in the oil field, correct?
Excuse me?
Apex, it's a company that worked in the oil field.
There is one, but that's not that.
That's not the one? Now, that's the floor. Where happened to the handicap?
The handicap ramp, we submitted that to CDBG today. We gave them the number, the quotes. They've got to go to Harrisburg and do something. DCD, they said that they'd let us know within five days, and we can go out and get... We've already got the bids, we can award it and then have it done.
What was the bid coming in on?
The low bid was in the neighborhood of about $7,000.
And they're gonna do what, the entrance?
Yes.
From the sidewalk to the front?
Front door, yes.
Did they do the kitchen? Where it took place in the kitchen?
That was released today too, we can actually...
Order all the equipment.
Okay, and what is the amount there?
I don't have it in front, I'll get it for you, Pino. I definitely...
I mean roughly, because I'm trying to add up the numbers. I mean...
You're gonna come up short, I mean, we've got money left over. We can do things like maybe expand it to include exhaust fans in the kitchen and so forth that we didn't have the ability to do before. Spend it the best we can, as smart as ways we can. At the Civic Center, yes. It'd have to be at the Civic Center.
So that's all gonna be covered, so if there's any money left over, where's it gonna go to?
Civic Center, if possible.
Civic Center?
Yep. Now, that is money that's got a time limit on it. It's gotta be done by March 1st. The money evaporates if it's not spent by money March 1st.
Let me ask you another question. Julian, that works there, right? How many hours a week does he work?
About 29, I believe.
What is the pay scale that he's given?
I don't recall offhand.
14. I think it's 14.
$14? So, how can he live on 29 hours per week on $14 an hour? Because you know he's gotta pay taxes on the money that he's getting, because that's not clean money that he's getting. He's getting $14, dirty money. But I call dirty money, because it's gonna be taxed on. So, how can a person live on that?
It's tough.
You don't care?
No, it's tough. I don't have more money offered, is what I'm saying.
I suggested a little while ago, if your attorney will go back to the original pay of $40,000 per year. Okay, I suggested that a couple months ago. And then you take the $20,000 that you will be setting, $26,000 that you be saving with a law firm, and give it to Julian, then he'd be able to survive, right?
Yeah.
Yeah? It's only fair because...
Let me put it to you this way, okay? You own a business, you work for government, you go somewhere else to help wanted sign. Whether it be McDonald's, Wendy's, it doesn't matter where it is, okay? They advertise that this is what they're paying an hour and whatever, or it's part-time or whatever. People accept positions, they knowing upfront what they're getting paid. Plain and simple. We all do it, everyone in this room does it. Makes a decision, a mental decision, to say, this is what I'm going to make, or if I don't like it, I'm looking elsewhere. Plain and simple.
I understand exactly what you're saying. But I also understand that maybe this kid doesn't mean to get anywhere, maybe he doesn't have a vehicle. But the bottom line is this, okay? How is he gonna make a living on 14 bucks an hour on 29 hours per week? Okay, you know, well, let me ask you a better question. Maybe that will answer this question. You code enforcement, last time you told me he gets 50 grand, something like that, but he has two helpers.
Not two helpers.
One helper?
One.
And it's 50 grand.
And it's 50 grand for both.
I asked that question, you guys said no.
No, we said for both.
So, what, do you share the money?
They're, they only, it's not a full-time position for one.
So how's he get paid?
By the hours he works.
What's he making an hour?
That I gotta think of.
No, it's not a salary, no.
It's not a salary.
It's a budget. $50,000 is a budget for the code enforcement office. It's basically paid on an hourly rate. That's $50,000 to run that office.
What is the hourly rate?
I don't know everybody's pay.
Is it 14 bucks an hour?
It's not, it's not an hour. It's based on a budget number of $50,000 for that department position, period. If it's one person, or three or four people, that's what we budgeted for.
I understand, I understand what the budget is. 50 grand whether there's one person, and it will not exceed 50 grand according, for most time, if you have four people. My question to you is simple. How much do you pay them by the hour?
I'd actually have to look that one up, you know.
Well, is it 14 bucks an hour?
I would have to look that one up, to be honest with you.
Would you say, would you be pretty confident saying no, that it's more than 14 bucks an hour?
I would not feel confident saying it's more than $14 an hour. It might be a buck more if that, I'm not quite sure.
You know, I think you guys gotta rethink. You know, we don't pay people slave wages.
You do, you do for the case for everybody up here right now.
And I'm not gonna condone this, but I'm gonna ask you a question. Do you know what the PA...
Seven something, I know it is. You know, but you know why? Do you know any legislator or senator or anybody that works in government makes 725?
I don't know a person, and I know that doesn't happen, but that's not beside the point. The point is the state age is seven, we're paying 14.
I know what the law is, because we're stupid enough to elect people who doesn't...
Matter of fact, there was something on the news before I came down here, that there was that exact question, that Pennsylvania's minimum wage is 7...
25.
No, 20 what? And every neighboring, every neighboring state is between $16 and $26. It's way past what Pennsylvania's is.
Would you be fair to say that you know anybody that makes 725 in this whole area, or any area?
I have no clue, because I don't hire anybody, and God loves somebody. God loves somebody if they can make it on 7 something an hour, you're absolutely correct. But that's a choice people make when they apply for a job and say, I'll take that for that value. There's no employer I know in the world that forces it down your throat. So, you don't think about anything, you think about what's presented to you as a prospective employee. This is the package that the company's offering you, and I'm not saying, might we love to pay everybody here a lot more money, but our tax base doesn't have it. We don't have it, okay? I'm sorry, it's just a cold hard truth.
So, anyway, the bottom line is that I think the individual that I'm talking about, or anyone who holds a job anywhere, should be making more than, at least if he was making $14 an hour and working 40 hours a week, I could see it. But when you work 29 hours, 29 hours a day, and you only make 14 bucks, I mean, you're clearing $8, $8, $9 an hour per day. That's the most you're gonna be clear.
I don't know what you want.
Well, I'd like to see him get an increase in his wages.
He got an increase. The mayor fought for his increase. He originally wasn't making $14 an hour. He was making $10 an hour.
Why don't you give him 40 hours per week?
Because then he's a full-time employee, and we can't put another person on payroll to benefits. That's why.
I'm just gonna say...
The position does not require a full-time position. That's what the rec board is supposed to help with. That's something council is going to be looking into, and is going to put...
Let me move on, I understand what you're saying, okay? I understand what you're saying. I do understand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Want to ask a second question. Who's, who are on the board on the Civic Center? Do you guys know who was on the board?
The red board?
No, I'm asking a question. Do you guys know who's on the board?
I couldn't name you a name, because they were all appointed by the last administration, when everybody from the prior rec board all resigned. We're well aware of that, we've discussed that so many times, it's a dead animal up here, but... Well, we did advertise, if I'm correct, we advertised... Excuse me, we advertised, the council authorized last month to advertise for all of those positions that are open. Did we get anybody mic for rec board?
Not yet.
Does that answer your question?
Well, let me make it quite clear, there's several boards that we need people to volunteer for, to be considered for. The library board is one, the rec board is another. Is there any others that are really short?
Yeah, planning commission.
J-Tree Commission.
There might be a making scene there as well.
The Planning Commission.
Refuge Authority.
Refuge Authority.
Well, it's still an open position.
Yeah, it's still an open position.
Who you guys got on the refuge position? I'd like to hear, because I know that, I think...
It's been advertised, and we're gonna have to go through the applicants, and then we're gonna have to interview the applicants, and then at that time, council will make a decision. But nothing is going to happen until that happens. I'm hoping it gets done probably next month, before next month.
Yeah, we better do it on the 28th.
For what job? For what job?
All the boards.
All of them.
Now, I'm asking a question, because he was at our refuge meeting, and he said he was bringing it out to council on his meeting.
I thought it was this meeting, but it's the next meeting.
But, you mean it took two years to put one guy in? And then a guy that is in there who's an ex...
We only put people in when they request to be put on the boards.
Well, he asked if he could be put in.
Yeah.
And you guys put him on hold.
No.
We'd put anybody, because it has to get advertised fairly, so everybody in the city could have the same responsibility and take a chance and say, I'd like to do that, I want to get interviewed for it. We just don't, just because you've been there, you're gonna automatically get renewed. That's wrong. And you would be one of the first persons to stand up here and say, I didn't get the opportunity to do something, I'm sorry. It doesn't work that way, Pino. Can't be both ways.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
But here's my question.
The other thing too, is just so everybody understands this as well, if you are serving on a board or authority right now, and your term has expired, you can stay on that board or authority until which time, as council appoints, either reappoints you or appoints somebody different.
Okay, he wasn't told that. Because I was at the last meeting, he wasn't told that.
He was told that by the refuge authority solicitor, I heard him say that, and I verified that through our solicitor.
Okay, so all I'm telling you is this. It took two years for someone to, somebody found somebody and said, hey, you know, this guy here is part of your team, bring him in. And you did, and now you got a guy that just wants to be there, and you say, okay, he's gotta go through the process. And I do understand, okay?
So we're clear about that.
But I do understand. But what, does it have to take two months? This has been going on for the last four months.
The biggest problem is, in our advertisement that we ran, that gave people 30 days to respond.
I'll tell you again, advertise, not on a fake news, advertise on some rural news, okay? Because nobody buys that paper.
And the other part about it, Pino, is the position did not expire till December 31st at midnight, I believe.
Right.
So, what do you want us to do? You can't do it before the term, because there has been situations in this city where people have got it appointed before the term was up, and it started a hellstorm. And we're not doing that again. His council's gonna do it right.
Our meeting was January.
Okay.
So we had a meeting in January, which...
The council didn't have a meeting, this is the first meeting in January we had.
But he said at the meeting that he was gonna bring it up to council, because you guys were gonna vote on it.
Yeah, and I really thought, I really thought we were, but I found out that the advertisement said 30 days, 30 days is not up, we gotta allow our people to respond. The 21st? Yeah, I think it's the 21st. Yes. And I ask anybody that's watching Facebook, or gets YouTube, or whatever the case may be, please apply. If you have any interest in serving on any of those boards, please apply.
Well, my last question is, that you are a liaison for the redevelopment authority, correct? That's what you said. Now, they're doing a lousy job, you got to admit that.
And this next redevelopment authority, I'm going to present something that I think that everybody will find interest in.
When?
This next award meeting that they have, next week.
Well, at the end of the day, all I'm saying is that the redevelopment authority is one of the most important authority in the city.
I agree.
And they do a lousy job, only because they're being controlled and manipulated by others. You know, and I find that to be very, very like sort of, you know, when you got a board without an agenda, at least you guys, you know, got an agenda. Every place else got an agenda, except the redevelopment meeting. They don't have to have an agenda.
There's one posted on the door right now. Anybody else with comments?
My name's Norman Madison, I live at 22 Court Avenue, Manassas. I mean, the rec board that we got, they're not doing anything.
Everybody has already said that.
I mean, get rid of them. What you need to do is get somebody that knows what they're doing. And the rec board seemed like to me, they're supposed to help out with those, with the guy down at the Civic Center that's controlling them kids. And if you can't help out down there, you don't need to be on the rec board.
I don't disagree one bit.
All right. I know when my nephew ran the rec board, just to help him out. And then I got to the point where I ran it myself. And I was down there at 8 o'clock in the morning, to sometimes 11 o'clock, because I had basketball players coming in that worked from out of town. And, I mean, I had no problem, I cleaned that place by myself. I cooked down there by myself. I mean, I did it all, and didn't have no rec board at all. We didn't have a rec board.
Well, if your interests did apply for the rec board...
And then they develop this rec board that don't do nothing but sit on their butt and have meetings, and that's it. Sometimes they don't even have the meetings.
They have not had... The rec board has not had a quorum in many months now.
And they don't know nothing. They sit home, and they write, oh, I'm on a rec board in Manassas, big deal.
Mr. Madison, that's why we advertised for all those positions. Now, you can't sit here...
They put me on a rec board.
They put an application in.
Did you put in for it?
Put in Atlanta.
Put in for it, I'll be happy.
And the ones you got, get rid of. If they ain't gonna help, get rid of them, they're no good.
Nobody's arguing with you with that, but you've got to put your name in.
I'll do that.
We would appreciate it.
I agree, you know, you can't complain if you can't come and help us. But we want you on there, we want people who care and concerned on putting their time to do it. But you can't sit, people cannot sit back and complain and not come help out.
I'm not complaining.
No, no, you're telling the truth, what you're telling is the truth, but we need your help, we need everybody's help.
I've been in community care for 25 or 30 years in Manassas. When the temporary divestment still was here, I worked.
We need you, Mr. Norman. You care about the kids, we need people who care, who say they care about Manassas, that come and be involved. And I know you do, so put your letter in.
And get your friends to put in letters too. Because one person does not make a board.
That's not enough.
No, but I'll tell you what, that one person, get somebody that's gonna do something. If they ain't gonna do nothing...
Get some of your friends to come help you.
If they don't do nothing, get rid of them, that's what you do.
There you go.
I mean, what are they doing? They're sitting around making their own meetings when they get time, and if they don't have time, they're not gonna bother them.
This is the time to do it. All the boards are open, it's a new year, so we need new people who come and care about the city of Manassas, and come and sign up, put your letter in, and get busy helping us to try to continue to move Manassas forward. Sign up, bring your letter down here, let's get this thing going.
I'll do that. Thank you.
It depends on which position you get, because there's different time limits, I think, for every position.
I think the rec board is three or five years.
They give them which one?
It's council as a whole. Well, we'd have to do it through council action, in one form or another.
It's something to look into.
Yeah.
You got too many people with keys to that. They open that door anytime they get ready. And they're going there. Each time I go down there, the light's on, okay?
Do you know how many times, you know how many, you know how many times I have authorized to have the locksmith to get out there and pay for it? You'd be, I must have three or four hundred dollars in expenses for a five or six times he's changed the locks.
Who, who's making the keys?
That's a good question.
I book in my mailbox, okay? I get checks from the community.
You mentioned that last time, but I'm talking about the main door.
That big door.
Again.
You know, let's go into, let's, let's, we've talked about this enough. Can we get the next person?
You got a combination lock with the key in it.
When this all started.
And that changes every, every week.
Yeah, and when this all started.
Well, maybe, but they should, it says do not duplicate on it.
Hey, Mayor, I go down there every single morning at nine o'clock, okay? Every single morning. I check my mailbox. I go down there, the door's open, the lights are on, nobody's there. I mean, in the evening, I mean, late in the evening, I go faster, the lights are on, the doors open. I mean.
Well, I can't stress how important it is we have a rec board that can help us with that.
What they do is put a log down there, take that box off, and there was the combination they give, whatever you want to give. You might go down there and the lights are on all day and all night, okay? And who pays for that? The city, right?
Right.
I mean, if lights is on down there, all them big heavy lights are down there.
What I'd really like to see is a rec board that would come up with a process where we could give everybody an ID card. So if you want to come in and play basketball, you wanna come in and play the, the pool, the, the, any of the games that they have there, you come in and you get yourself a card. You have your parent, well, let me finish. You have the parents come in and sign for it and so forth. Now, that kid has a card. When he comes in, he swipes it in. It knows who came in the building. He, he knows who, when he came in and when he left, because that's the card that allows you to work the locks. Exactly, but that's what the problem, reason why it hasn't happened.
They have to have somebody down there that's responsible when they go in there, cause no telling what they do in there when they're going there. That's what I'm saying. They, they go out, they leave the lights on.
And plus there's those windows. I work right across from them.
What you do is you hand lock that, you, you close that door and lock for everybody, okay? They thinking they put the match on, and they sit, and how much trouble is it to take that match and push it back and let the door close?
Let's start by getting a full rec board, or enough individuals that can make a difference down there, and then we could take it from there.
Absolutely.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Thank you.
Yeah, Bubba Palmer, twelve twenty-eight Maple. Uh, I'm also the chairman of board of directors, the number one fire department. Uh, come down this evening with no intentions to speak, just coming to hear what was going on until Ernie brought up a subject about the generators. I take personal offense that you turn the blame to the fire department.
Yeah.
Please let me speak, and the police department, that it's our responsibility to service those. Um, I, I know for a fact the city pays a mechanic, works at the garage in Perenny. We're, we're volunteers, first of all. None of us are diesel mechanics, none of us are electricians, or any of the such. Same with the police officers. They are police officers. What qualifications do we have to service a piece of equipment we know nothing about?
So let's talk about the generator for just a second. First off, that generator is supposed to be set up to automatically turn on and run once a week for a period of a couple hours. There is no initiator on that generator to say that that did or did not happen. But you walk up to it, you open up the cabinet, and you look at it, and it has a record of it that shows what's going on. People need to understand that. When you, you look at a fire truck, that's critical to your well-being, to, to be able to, know that that vehicle's gonna go out there. You're not mechanics, but you know how to operate that fire department, that fire truck. You know how to adjust the pressure, you know how to adjust everything about it, is you guarantee that that truck is always ready to go. By the same token, why can't you just simply make sure that that's part of what you're doing? Make sure that generator's gonna work, cause that truck's not going anywhere if the doors don't open, as we found out.
Well, that, that's fine. Why haven't we been told it was our job? We've been in that building since, since it opened. This tonight is the first time ever. I just asked Dave, chief of police, he has no idea. Secondly, how can the fire department service a piece of equipment?
Nobody's asking you to service it.
Or even check, we can't even check it because the controls are locked in the police station.
No, no, the controls are just behind the gate.
No, no, no. That's to start the generator.
That's where you need to make sure that it's working or not working.
Why do we need to make sure? Do we not, do we not employ a mechanic for the city of Madison? Yes or no?
He's working on other things. He's fully occupied. He has a job.
He doesn't have three minutes a day?
Perhaps what we might need to do then is put this on a maintenance schedule and have someone.
Absolutely.
Someone that can go around that if it was even here at the city.
But to sit here in a public meeting and blame the fire department and the police department, that, that is absurd. Absurd.
That's not at all the intent of what I was saying.
It's exactly what you said, though.
I'm saying that nobody checked it.
Exactly what you said. The fire department and police did not check it.
Right.
To be honest with you.
Can we do a job that we don't know we're supposed to do? Absolutely not.
It's water over the dam now, unfortunately.
It's not because, no, 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 no. Cause if, if that fire Tuesday morning would have been a fire, we'd have been making the motion to replace the garage door.
Listen, I'm talking about something else.
I'm talking about the generator.
That's what I'm gonna talk about.
Well, that's not something else.
Let me finish. What I'm gonna say is not about whether it's gonna do this or do that. Probably unfortunately now, that's the wrong generator that should have been in there, because if you're gonna put a bypass generator in, that's gonna like either power your home in an emergency, or like down there, it should have been natural gas that automatically kicked on, that it didn't need to worry about that, and it didn't have to rely on a flipping battery that went dead that nobody knew about it. I'm not saying that's an excuse.
I agree as well.
That's not an excuse, but we need now that we know.
This is twice in a year now that we've dealt with this. Maybe a year and a half.
We've spent, how much money have we spent on that generator this past year in maintenance on that?
Well, let me put it to you this, I, I don't, I'm probably at least eight or ten grand. But what I will ask is, I did ask our, I did ask our city administrator when, when this happened, asked him if he would find out when it was last, the company that serviced it, right, Mike?
Yes.
And Mike was following up to find out with them and find out why it failed, and that we're not paying for another service call to have something they should have done right the first time.
Well, what, what, let me.
Doesn't solve your problem.
No, 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 no. And here, and here's why I'm up here. And let me, let me get this very clear. Because that didn't work, everybody at this table, cause you're the only ones that can make the decisions, put volunteers in a bad situation to decide, do we drive this fire truck through this door, damage it?
Or do you work the, the cord and open it manually?
Please follow me to the station tonight, and I'd like to see you do it. It's a lot, this isn't a six-foot door in your garage at home. Okay? And it's even harder to do when there's no electricity in the whole facility, pitch black. So you have volunteers coming out on hazardous road conditions to help somebody of this, citizen of this community, to get there with a cell phone, trying to get dressed and not get hurt, to start a truck, and decide, do we let somebody's house burn down, or would you drive it through the door and have to deal with it later? What decision do you make? You, you don't know, cause you'll never be put in that decision.
First off, I very much respect all that you're saying, and I have all the respect in the world for the fire department. There's no doubt about that. But let me put it this way. First off, the generator is part of the building. It was put there when the building was built. And as such, yeah, you're right. We have spent lots of money trying to repair that generator and get it up to snuff. The, the reason why it failed this last time is because the water got into the G F I switch. It killed the, the battery charger. The battery went dead. It is a natural fire, natural gas fire generator, but you still have to have a starter motor to get it started. The battery was dead, and therefore it did not start. But just like anything else, whether it's a window that's broken on the fire department, whether it's a door that's sticking out there, whether the, the, there's a roof that's leaking on it, we don't know that it's working or not working without somebody telling us that it's working or not working. And all what I'm saying is, we have no idea that the generator was not going to work, nor did we expect any reason to have to go out and test it, because first off, it had a backup system that would be ready to fire. But nobody, not the police, not the fire department, not the city, ever went over there and looked at it and said, you know what? The G F I's got water in it. The battery is dead. This generator's not going to run.
Is it a generator?
No, it's a.
Can I, can I talk, please? I have the floor. I didn't interrupt anybody else. As I agree with you, that when we know to keep this fire engine in tip-top shape to leave, we know what we have to do, because we were told, you have to make, you know, do this, this, and this. You just said again that we didn't go check it. We cannot check something we know that we should be checking.
So we need to, we need to make sure that everybody.
We have no idea.
So we need to make sure that everybody over there, somebody over there understands how you gotta look at this and make sure it works.
I apologize. I'm senior digesting all this information. Um, you know, I, I'm not trying to throw anyone under the bus. I, I'm just trying to completely say that it's our building, it's our responsibility, and I completely agree that we should not be, um, asking someone, taking their time to make sure that we're safe. I really think that maybe we should sit down with, uh, the city administrator and the fire chief, municipal fire chief, and our city employees, for what our city employees can do to make sure that that building is being painted and, and in tip-top shape. But also at the same time, if there's something that they see, the volunteers, please let us know.
But I think. And with that said, we have turned in letters.
To maintain it. I, I can't just go on a whim and say, you know, it's, it's up to a volunteer.
I mean, I'm going way off topic now, but you said we, if you don't know, you can't fix it. We have turned in letters numerous of times. Our, our last count, we have eighty-eight burned out lights at the fire station. Eighty-eight lights.
By chance too, with one letter that we did send back, that we got, um, did we go back and, and take a look at all like the light bulb issues that they were mentioning?
Yep.
You know, back to the pool core and all that. Did we get any of that stuff looked at and fixed?
Over a year, two urinals didn't flush. The Sloan valves are bad.
Yeah.
All that has been turned in. So, so don't, don't say that we don't do our part. We report everything, everything. And we give it to multiple people, so nothing gets lost in the shuffle.
Okay, well then, um, if, if it's all been like you said, if it hasn't turned in, I think, Mike, we need to, uh, uh, we need to get someone down there.
And, and actually, we were asked to be put on the agenda at the last meeting, and we were not put on, cause we were gonna bring all that stuff up. And somehow, that got lost in the shuffle, and we weren't put on the agenda.
We gotta get our employees down there. I mean, we just, I, I can't keep on going back and forth and, and just going by notes when it starts right now to get down there and figure out what's going on.
Yeah, we actually had Cummins down there, or the repair guy down there today, and, and he, uh, he did fix the problem with the G F C I. The battery is being charged, and it should actually be fully functional by this time right now.
And he, he made an offer to train our city employees, John, real quick.
I mean, just from the word on the street, I was told a few days ago when I sent you guys those emails, that it's hanging, you know, by its last thread.
I don't believe that's the case. No.
He didn't think that.
No, he, the, the guy did not feel that way.
Bring ourselves down there and, and do a tour and figure out what's going on.
Well, the other thing is.
Mike and I did that today, and we met with a repairman. We went through the, the process.
John, and he came up with an idea to allow our city employees, he will train them to then be the maintenance folks that go down every bimonthly. I think, wait, I think, I think something that we can come away with on this unfortunate thing is, we need to have a possible separate power supply that opens doors in case of emergency.
And lighting.
Let's start at the doors. Only because I don't know.
We're, we're opening ourselves, we as in the city, as in you guys, to fifteen, twenty, thirty firemen coming in here in the pitch black. Three guys fall and break a leg. That, that's on the city.
Well, then, you're right.
You know what I'm saying? Cause there's supposed to be.
There should be some, there should be some emergency lights.
But there's not.
Well, we, we can.
And, and maybe that's some of the eighty-eight that are burned out. I don't know. But eighty-eight is an absurd number.
He didn't think that, but yeah.
To have in, in a public building.
Number, and it's the first time I've heard this.
Eighty-eight?
No, any of them.
Oh, oh, one, okay. I thought you said what is.
No, I said one is an absurd number. But I, this is the first time I've ever heard about all, cause I know we've had, we've sent Godla down there many times to, to fix the, uh, the urinals and things like that.
Well, they're, they're now working, but it's been many months that they, that they have not worked.
When we here, we actually send somebody to fix them.
And we've also talked this council to actually take those urinals out and say, get some money and replace them with a regular flush, because I don't know why, who put that together, that when they wanted to put the best and the more electronics, guess what? When you gotta use it, it don't work. So.
Take some of your arc money and fix that fire station.
We probably have money in the general account we could do it with. So the point of the matter is, it's now going to be addressed. We can harp on it for another half hour.
Yeah, I think one of the good things we have is that we have the chief who also works with our streets and public departments. They can all work together, set up a schedule that needs to be done, and get a list of what needs to be done between the mayor. No, no, I'm just saying, since they're saying, we got the chief, well, we avoided, I thank God, we avoided a major tragedy. We did.
Absolutely.
And so it's no more jump, it's not jumping on bags, doing what we need to do today, like you said yesterday. Well, that's what they're, that's what they're talking about, getting a maintenance schedule together.
That's, that's all I had. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Is there any other comments that anybody likes to have any? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. This meeting is adjourned.